And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
May I make a other suggestion? Since we have the mayor and city administrator of Waterville here, could we allow him to speak before we go into executive session? Please?
I guess I would, I don't have any objections to you guys except for the regular members.
The time is the only thing.
The time is the only thing, is if someone wants to be here at seven o'clock expecting the regular meeting, we've told them the regular meeting starts at seven. And so I don't know if that's an issue or not, if we should... Hopefully executive session won't take too long, right? I wouldn't think.
Oh, we can put them first on the agenda.
And we can have them speak first when they come back out of executive. And then we'll be close at seven if someone wants to come at that time. Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, I entertain a motion.
Okay. Motion to have them into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 405-6E consultation with legal counsel.
Is there a second? Then move and second and any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Poll, same sign.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
Okay, so public hearing. Okay. I'm gonna start the public hearing of the meeting real quick. If we could, I'm gonna, the public hearing is on ordinance number seven, 2017, providing for amendment to the town of Winslow code, chapter 14, section 1484, vacant buildings by adding the underline language and deleting the strike through language in the attached document. This meeting, this is a public hearing for anybody in town of Winslow who would like to get up to the podium and say, speak in any way against or for. Any interest? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
So move.
And we actually have two, the June 12th and June 28th. We'll go both. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Poll, same sign. And we will go into communications. We have a legislative report from our legislator. Everybody had a chance to read that. If there's any questions now, we have a public comment period for anybody from the public who would like to speak on any subject. And I think at this time, we would probably want to have the Waterville officials come up for the public comment period. If we could, we have some special guests tonight.
Thank you very much for having us here. I'm Andrew Lott, we're the council. I'm Nick Isro, mayor of Waterville, and I promise to be brief, but I appreciate the Considering a lot of the things that we've been discussing and a lot of the discussions that have been happening at state level, Mike and I have been talking quite a bit about a lot of the things that Winslow and Waterville have in common. And when we look at sharing services, a lot of people don't realize how much we already do. We have a fiber optic people that connects our two towns. We share a fire chief, we're partners in the Central Main Growth Council, we are partners in First Park. We're partners in our now, our school sports, and more recently, and as was especially highlighted by the Bangor Daily News in a wonderful article on the eighth, our historic combination of our hockey teams. Which leads me to why I'm here. We do a lot tonight from talking to many of the students, and when we look at the population trends in our schools, they seem to be going down and not up. And right now, there's an incredible opportunity, as the town of Winslow is looking at a $10 million dollar price tag for a new school, and as we're looking at closing schools. The governor's office has a new program, obviously that we probably all heard of, that is actually offering money to districts that are continuing to work together more to get more resources going to the classrooms for our students, for our teachers. It's, I've had the impression that one of the barriers to the talks of doing more together between Waterville and Winslow is that there's been a concern that goes back, I believe, many years, that Waterville would be particularly heavy-handed in that process. I'm here to tell you that I think if we do that, and I think that we will have more of these talks, that process can look however we wish it to look. And there's no reason for Winslow to have that fear, and we are certainly open. And so, to wrap it up, I'm just here to say that we would love to continue to discuss more ways that we can work together, and particularly in our schools for our students, to make sure that resources are going where they should be, and our doors are open, and our ears are open, and we would love to continue to be your partners going forward on more that we can do together. Thank you.
I have a few questions?
Yes.
What specific are you talking about at, like, one combined high school, one combined junior high school, or what specifics, what now are you looking at for an end goal for that type of process? Or is it more on a smaller scale?
I think that we could look at both of those. I have had a long talk with Eric Haley recently. If you look at just the AOS system, I know Eric and his staff believe that it's not working. They have several budgets, several town councils, several school boards, and they are rightfully burned out. And so, as you guys know, because you've been dealing with it, and we've been dealing with it, it becomes almost an untenable situation where we're all trying to get in front of our town council, and we want the answers, and you do too, and Vassalboro does too. Speaking with Eric, we actually, to move into a single junior higher high school would not require the building of any new infrastructure, which I think is particularly important, because between the two towns, we have plenty of existing infrastructure. I'm not here to force that on you, so I think that certainly should be, if we're looking 10 years down the road, and we're looking at these long-term projections, I think that's something we should consider. I think the only benefit now is that we know that there's definitely money available if we were to dissolve the AOS, if that was something that Winslow was interested in. But however that looks like, I guess, I'm here to say, we're open to, however those talks would form, and interested in hearing whatever ideas Winslow would have, and making sure that Winslow feels like, would feel like you would have an equal seat at the table, and that it wouldn't be just Waterville coming in to try to have a heavy hand in that process. Because we do, I think it's something that we believe in, our school board believes in, and our superintendent believes in. And I think more can be done. I'm guessing if we don't, we're gonna continue to see the sports teams lead the way. If you look at other districts that have done this, I mean, it really is the kids who lead the way, because I think what prevents a lot of these actions is us older folk who still have our old rivalries, and we think about our colors and our teams, and we don't want to do it. But talking to a lot of the students, I think there's a lot of optimism going in that direction. Because I think they understand how many more resources pooled together could create better educational programs, better sports programs, and I think it's something that both towns could use as a benefit to attract residents. In the same way that Oakland, Belgrade, Cindy, and Rome have for decades always used their school system, and it hasn't really affected any of those towns in a negative way that it would.
I know that in the past, you know, normally when we would look at a project like this, we would form a task force with the council permission. Are you looking at, like, Waterville City Council forming a joint, and Winslow approving of a joint task force that would look into that issue?
I would certainly love that, and I think me being here tonight is to try to crack that door open. I, speaking to Waterville officials, we are definitely open and wanting to be willing partners at the table. I think that would be up to you, but we are ready, for sure.
I don't think there's any question that we ought to talk about. Go ahead.
You know, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think that we've all looked at the numbers, and if you look at school enrollment, if you look at the population of towns, the population of Winslow is pretty much flat. And we're all getting older, and there's nothing wrong with getting older, but if you look at the trends, we are gonna have to do something. Because we just can't continue to fund a school that was designed for 1,500 students plus, and now we're gonna be approximately 1,000. And we just cannot have that economy of scale. So I think it would be a very worthwhile endeavor to begin those conversations, and to find out those areas where we may have some mutual interest. And one of the areas, those of us who like trash, you know, we've got two systems doing the same thing, and there's a lot of those common areas where I think, besides just education, where there is great potential for the economy of scale, combining resources, and not everybody trying to do everything. And I think the people of Winslow and Sport, because it all comes back to, they're the ones that pay the debt.
Any other observations?
It's just that the schools is a little bit different situation, in just my opinion, in that you have to look at more than just infrastructure, obviously. There's demographics, there's a whole bunch of things that go into, you know, when you combine schools, the emotional part of it, obviously, which is pretty heavy in some people's mind and stuff.
It's really something that wouldn't happen if I, I'm sure. We'd love to discuss.
I think that's good.
Thank you so much. We're happy, we appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to participate in a public comment of this meeting?
I think you probably all know the Hillary Keane, and chairman of the planning board, but if you remember some of my history, at one time I was the executive director of the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments, working together with municipalities to provide economy of scale for some kinds of staff expertise, so the municipality wouldn't have to hire that. But also, in the very beginning, I was hired because we needed, in order to get federal and state money to help build sewage treatment plants, to figure out what would be the most effective way to do it. Should each municipality have its own sewage treatment plant? Or should we combine to save money both in construction and operation? And we ended up having one sewage treatment plant for Winslow, and Waterville, and Fairfield, and Denton. But we made a mistake. We should have included Oakland, and now we know Vassalboro. Things are a little different now, but we did the best we could. So I want to support the idea of Waterville-Winslow working together as far as schools are concerned to make a good, highly viable school system for all of our students, and to do it at least cost for a very viable and workable system. So that's what I wanted to say at this time.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any further comments for the public hearing process? Any? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Bill Sedalsky, I'm a citizen of the town of Winslow, I've been here all my life. Waterville-Winslow has been a rivalry over many years, but between our fire department, our police department, our school department, Public Works, it's time that we do something. The town of Winslow's mill rate, according to Mr. Fletcher, wants to be jacked up because of our school system, and this may be our answer to the whole problem, and so I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else like to speak on any subject? If not, we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting. And we will begin with the town manager's report.
I have two items, really, that I'll talk about now, unless there are any questions. The first item is the sale of town-owned property, and as you know, we foreclosed on three parcels on the Maple Ridge Road, and that was over a three-year period, and all three parcels are connected, and all three were owned by the same previous owner. The parcels are currently being farmed by Elwood Stevens. He's either farming all or a portion of each parcel, and I've been in communications with him. He's reorganizing his finances and would like to get to the point, and is hoping that he can, maybe within the next month or two, to be able to buy those three parcels that he's currently farming. And if he's able to do that, he intends to expand his farming operations by building a building and adding some cattle. So I just wanted the council to be aware of that. I know we've been talking about selling town-owned property. The other item is our $2 million bond. Those did go up for bid, and we did sell, and I'm very pleased to say that we ended up with an interest rate of 1.77. That certainly exceeded my expectations. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that. The fund, the funds, bond funds will be available and actually transferred into our account on July 13th. That's all I have.
Any questions for the town manager and his report? Go ahead.
What's happening on Fulton Avenue on the hill? We got a contractor.
Yes. Yep.
What are the problems?
Did you want the public works?
Might as well, I'm putting one on my seat.
We have a contractor right now. We are still working on business to move the poles onto the backside of the sidewalk. I haven't checked with our engineer today, because I was busy, but I'm assuming this week we'll get that aired out. Contractor right now is in no big hurry to start, he's fetching up other projects, but at some point, we definitely get going, but we've had a hard time contacting people. The problem is, on the other side, on the backside of the sidewalk, we started encroaching beyond the right of way, and the CMP just won't set a pole that they don't have the easement for. And we come to find out, when the lower pole we want to move is beyond relevant property, so we definitely don't want to go there. So we're looking at other options, either... We may end up leaving them where they are, on the edge of the curve, as much as I hate to, but we don't have much of a choice. I'd love to put them on the backside of the sidewalk, it makes snow move a lot easier for everybody, but sometimes you do what you can't, you can't always get what you want, so. But it's been, it's been tough trying to get contact with people, and I'll work on it.
Any further questions?
How about the waterman?
I haven't spoken to the district yet this week. Like I said, this morning was crazy, like Monday mornings are, I'll get deserting tomorrow, I believe he was preparing these bids, they have not gone out to bids yet. If they have, it's just recently, so that's holding us up a little bit too. If I might, while we're here, Mike, if you don't mind, you want me to bring up the sidewalks over by the elementary school?
Yes, please.
Because there was, there was a request here earlier this winter, during budget time, to do, repair some of the sidewalks on Benton Avenue over by the elementary school. Part of that, along with the guardrail, is, really should be a part of the street project, because an area there, the sidewalk, is actually longer than the road. And the other part of the sidewalk is higher than the road, so we're probably just gonna skimcoat that this year and get it smoothed out a little bit anyway. The part that's in the grass, I want to rebuild and pave that this year, because even if we fix the road, we're not gonna affect that. But we may not do, you know, the hundred percent.
So you'll rebuild one section that you're able to, and repave the other section?
We'll repave the other section up to, leave it turned, the first, the first street that's under the parking lot.
It'll certainly be a big improvement.
Just enough to get it smoothed out, put too, too much time and effort into it, just so that it's, it's walkable. I know it's not a...
I think we all know that there's portions of that sidewalk that are not walkable, and it has to be done.
So I just wanted to bring that up, because that question had been raised, and we didn't have a chance to talk about it.
Thank you.
Just so the council's aware.
Appreciate that. Great. Okay, so, any more questions about the town manager's report? If not, we have the department reports. Anybody have anything to say about that? We have the finance, committee report, the treasurer's warrants, and the financial. If everybody's all set, I'll entertain a motion to accept all reports.
So move.
Move and second, and any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Poll, same sign, passes. Okay, moving on to our business. We have one on the table. Are we gonna leave that on the table, or someone make a motion to?
Make a motion to remove resolution, what?
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen.
2017.
Right, from the table.
Is there a second? Or do we need more?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second. So, resolution 15, 2017, has been taken off the table and is now open for discussion, providing for the authorization of the town manager to sign the attached administrative consent agreement between Caleb Alabot and the town of Winslow. I believe this is the one, the original one, and we amended to include the third. Well, is that correct? We all agree there? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Is that a roll call? No? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Poll, same sign, passes unanimously. So now we will move on to new business. We begin with ordinance eight, 2017, providing for an amendment to Winslow's zoned ordinance, chapter 17, by adding the underline and deleting the strike through language in attached document. Street ordained by town council, the town council of town of Winslow, S. Falls, whereas the town council would like to allow private swimming pools to be closer to the rear and side yard properties lines than principal and accessory structures. And whereas the town manager and code enforcement officer have prepared the attached proposed amendment to Winslow's zoned ordinance, chapter 14, now therefore be ordained by town council of town of Winslow, Maine, that the Winslow's zoning ordinance, chapter 14, be amended by adding the underline and deleting the strike through language in the document. What is your pleasure?
So move.
Second.
Move and second, and open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
In the amendment, we're proposing to strike swimming pools from the definition of a structure, that's to avoid any confusion. And if we do that, one thing I didn't add was, we would also need to amend Article Three, section 1423, and I have an updated version, that would require a private swimming pool to get a building permit. We just wanted to make sure that the building permit was required. So I'm just proposing we add that...
So we would have to amend this ordinance that's on the table? Is that correct?
Yes, to add that.
To add this Article Three. Okay. We use what Article Three says.
And basically, Article Three is adding number 21, private swimming pool, is one of the items that's required to have a building permit.
So they're required to have a building permit for a swimming pool, but the swimming pool is not a principal structure and can be moved closer to a sideline. Is that the outcome of this?
That's what's being proposed, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is that for in-ground, above-ground, what size swimming pool?
Both.
Both?
Both above, where you...
About the waiting pool?
If it's part of the pool or an accessory, this suggested we have to need a five-yard, a five-foot rear yard and side yard setback.
And I assume you would need a proper fence and everything?
Yes.
Nobody's gonna be able to build a pool that goes to somebody's property without a fence down.
Yes.
Any questions? Have we got, able to digest all that? Do we want to make an amendment?
Yes, good, Mr. Chairman. I move that we amend the ordinance, as the town manager has suggested, adding under section 1423, including A 21, indicating that private swimming pools will need a permit.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Amendment has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, or just the amendment? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Poll, same sign, passes. So the amendment passes, and now we are voting on the amended version of ordinance eight, 2017.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
What I was alluding to is, at what size are we gonna have, or require them to have a building permit? There was some pool that are only about that high.
Says right here, Derek. Section one.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Historically...
Okay, twenty-four.
Historically, the code office, if it's a pool that's seasonal, so they put it up for the summer, and they take it down for the winter, historically, we haven't required a permit for that type of pool.
Or fence.
Or fence. Well, will the fence be required on a...
Take it down every year? Be permitted?
Is this one reading, or will this require?
Two readings.
This will require a reading next month with a public hearing, and so we'll be able to allow the public to have input, if they so choose, on these changes. Is everybody clear now? We now have an amended ordinance, number eight, 2017, has been amended, and we are about to vote on it, if there's no further discussion. Go ahead.
Now, is there a fee to that building permit, or is it just an informational type building permit?
Ten cents a square foot.
Ten cents a square foot, yeah. There is a fee.
Is that for the pool, or the fence, or both?
The pool, but you have to have a fence. A fence is not required, unless it's all six feet.
Any further discussion? We're all set? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. It was just pointed out to me that I actually skipped our first one, was ordinance number seven, and so I'll go back to that one now. Ordinance number seven, providing for an amendment to town Winslow code, chapter 14, section 1484, vacant buildings, by adding the underline language and deleting the strike through in the attached document. What is your pleasure?
So move.
Then move.
Uh-huh.
And second it. Open for discussion. This is the one that we passed last week, that was last month? No discussion? Okay, we're ready for a roll call then.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
And now we will move on to ordinance nine, 2017, providing for amendment to the Winslow's zoned ordinance. Chapter, excuse me, chapter 14, section 1422 variances, by adding the underline and deleting the strike through language in the attached document, ordained by town council of town of Winslow, as follows: Whereas the town wishes to reduce the cost of sending out variance appeals hearing notices. And whereas the code manager, town manager and code enforcement officer have prepared the attached proposed amendment to the Winslow's zoned ordinance, chapter 14, section 1422 variances, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of town of Winslow, Maine, that the Winslow's zoned ordinance, chapter 14, section 1422 variances, be amended by adding the underline and deleting the strike through language in the attached document.
So move.
Move and second it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Okay. As I pointed out in my report, it came to my attention that that particular section in our ordinance was not written very well, and so attempted to rewrite it, to add clarity. And when I did, I sent it to the planning board... And when I did, I sent it to the planning board for them to review it. They were okay with first-class mail provided. It could be, uh, sent as registered mail. However, a first-class envelope, um, can't be sent as registered. So, uh, planning board member Gary Owen is here, um, did some research, apparently talked to the post office, and believes that, uh, certified mail would meet the intent of the planning board, uh, when they voted to require it be registered mail. And so I, in my report, I gave you a list of the, of the cost. Currently, we require that it be sent certified with return receipt, which is a little expensive. Certified mail would just provide proof, uh, really that it had been mailed. What we do in the, um, codes office and assessing office, when we send out the notices, we keep a copy of the, um, mailing labels on the printed sheet. So we have a record of who the, um, mail was sent to. And what I suggest in the ordinance is that instead of requiring a certified mail at a higher cost, the code enforcement officer can just certify on the mailing labels, the copy, of the date and time when the mail, when it was put in the mail. And, uh, I think that would satisfy, um, the requirement to be able to track it, you know, when, when it was sent out, whether it met the ten-day requirement or seven-day requirement, whichever it is or not. So I did want the council to know that the planning board, um, most likely would be more comfortable with the certified mail as opposed to what I'm proposing.
Good, Mr. Chairman. I think I would be inclined to go with a certified mail approach because even though we could certify that we mailed it.
It's nice to certify they received it.
Well, and, and that the post office certified that it was mailed.
That it was delivered.
Right.
Yeah.
Because otherwise than that, we could find ourselves potentially in a position, well, how do we know that that's not a mistake? And, you know, this is almost like a verification approach. Now, it is approximately three dollars and thirty cents more, but considering the number of times that this would have to occur and within two hundred feet, probably would not be of owner's expense for somebody who is requesting a variance because that hopefully doesn't happen very, very many times.
Right.
So that, that would be my inclination.
Thank you. Ben?
And basically what this is doing too is just changing it from five hundred to two hundred feet.
Yes.
And one of the things about it, it will have a receipt that the person at the other rent has, uh.
Well, that's a second one. That's another three dollars extra. You've got three choices, first class, certified, or certified with a return receipt.
Right.
Do we wanna do the certified with a return receipt or you don't think that's necessary?
I, I would.
To me, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say, I would because the person at the other rent can say, I never received it. And you try to prove it, there's no way.
But I think, and I'm not postal expert, I love this, some in the audience who are, but if we have a certified mail, the post office is certifying that it was mailed and delivered. We aren't verifying the person actually.
Picked it up.
Picked it up, you know, but they could throw it in the junk. But we, you know, but we've got verification that that was mailed.
And if I could add, on the, uh, return receipt, we have to do that on, uh, new notices and proposals.
Right, okay.
And people intentionally don't go pick those up. And so we send it both ways because they usually call me when they get it in the mail and tell me, geez, I knew I had something at the post office, but I just didn't pick it up.
So the, the compromise sort of is a certified mail, that, the halfway in between. And I think that's adequate. It seems to me to be adequate to protect us and not be too expensive. I understand why you would think, why you would want a receipt, but I think the important ones we do ask for a receipt, right? That's what, that's what the convention is.
Those are certified and not return re- return receipt.
Not return receipts, right. And so is that what's in the ordinance that we are, that's on the table or do we have to amend it?
You have to amend that.
Okay, so this ordinance has to be amended to put the term certified mail.
Right.
In our regard, Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the section fourteen twenty-two variances. The second sentence, the notice shall be sent, strike first class and include certified mail.
Is there a second to that amendment?
So moved.
Then moved?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to amend ordinance number nine, two thousand seventeen. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Do you have to have a roll call on amendment? Okay, we'll do a roll call on the amendment only.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. So now ordinance number nine, two thousand seventeen, is on the table as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote in the amended ordinance.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. We will now move on to ordinance nine, two thousand seventeen, order providing for the sale of tax acquired property, be ordained by town council of town Winslow as follows, whereas the town of Winslow has acquired Ten Dollar Street, map thirteen, lot two twenty-nine. And whereas the town council would like to convey the property to the prior owner, now therefore be it ordered by the town council, town manager is hereby authorized to issue a quick claim deed to the Vett Bard for Ten Dollar Street, map thirteen, lot two twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I just wanna add, that will be after we receive payment of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
And that's for three years, right?
Yes. Anything else? And we have a hands-on, we have a roll call on our order. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote and if everybody's satisfied.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Moving on to order ten, two thousand seventeen, order providing for the sale of tax acquired property, be ordained by town council of town Winslow as follows, whereas town Winslow has acquired the properties described in the attached list that has determined that the town has no use for such properties. And whereas the town manager will be listing the properties with a local realtor, now therefore be ordained by town council, town manager is hereby authorized to negotiate and sell the tax acquired property as described in the attached list to the listing realtor and to issue quick claim deeds for the properties. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, in my report, I noted that, uh, the realtor on the five-eighth parcel, uh, she was suggesting that, uh, we asked, uh, listed for thirty-two thousand. And the, um, thirty-eight Whitefish Road parcel, that we listed for fifty-one thousand.
And so that's what we're gonna start at with those two properties. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Move on to order number eleven, two thousand seventeen, an order providing for submitting a ten thousand, ten million. Ooh. Ten million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bond order to referendum by the town council of town of Winslow is hereby ordered that pursuant to and in accordance with section one thousand two and section one thousand four of the Winslow Town Charter, the order attached heretofore is, as attachment A, be submitted to the voters of the town of Winslow for adoption at a municipal referendum election on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand seventeen, in the form of the following question. Shall the order entitled Order Authorization Up to Ten Million Three Hundred and Twenty Thousand Dollars, Three Hundred and Twenty-five Thousand Dollars of the town's general obligation bonds to finance renovations to and the equipment and expansion of Winslow Elementary School and Winslow High School be adopted? That's how it will appear on the ballot. That the question shall also contain a treasurer's statement as required under thirty A MRS five seven seven two, two dash A, that this order shall constitute the city's declaration of official intent within the meaning of Treasury Regulation one point one five oh dash two, that the question be submitted with the recommendation of town council, that the town manager and clerk be and hereby are authorized and directed to undertake all action necessary to appropriate to place said question before the voters at such election. What is your pleasure?
Good, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I had posed some questions because going back and, uh, getting prepared for this, there were four specific.
Can I just make one point in order? Um, I'd like to have the order put on the table for us to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We need a motion?
Therefore, I move to bring this on to the table, Mr. Chairman.
Then moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, now we are open to discussion on order number eleven, two thousand seventeen. Thank you, Ken.
Well, now I'll try to start again. There were four specific questions and, and I've tried to attend as many meetings as I could of both the building and, and the committee after that. One of the questions was back when the building committee approved a comprehensive plan, it was for eight point three million. The latest plan excluding the possible demolition of, uh, Junior High is nine point six seven five. So I just needed to understand what changed from October of sixteen to whatever. I think the school administration gave me the two spreadsheets and I quickly looked through it and, and there is quite a bit of variation, both in construction as well as administrative costs and reserves. So I'm gonna have to spend some more time with that and may come back and say, how come, for example, technology equipment was originally estimated to be two hundred thousand and now it is six hundred and, six hundred and seventy thousand? So I just need to understand that to make sure I know what's caused that. You know, we also talked about the potential cost of renovating the Junior High. I think they provided me the input with that so that I can reconcile that. One of the big things that I think is gonna be absolutely critical if we're going to take full advantage of the consolidation is to make sure that we're planning to include as many of the savings as possible. If you think about it, if we go from a three-building design to a two-building design, hopefully there is not only energy savings and so forth, but also from a staffing standpoint, particularly when you consider the enrollments going down. You know, that we are, you know, if we drop three hundred kids in twenty twenty, we're gonna drop another, you know, fifty to a hundred. So that's gotta start showing up somewhere in, in our cost structure. So I've gotta be comfortable with that. And of course, the significance of that is the more that we reduce our operating costs, that will mitigate the debt service cost.
Right.
And, and right now, my, my gross calculation, if we do a twenty-year and with the savings that's claimed, we're probably looking at a mill increase of about point seven five. And I think that's a little bit higher than what we anticipated because I saw the news article that said it'd be no higher than point five. So, you know, I've gotta get comfortable with that. And then also, I was expecting the school committee with their June third meeting would make a recommendation from a standpoint of whether they wanna go twenty-year or thirty-year bond. The significance of that is if we go a thirty-year bond, the, uh, the interest is approximately three to four million dollars more over that term. So that's an important matter I think we need to consider. It looks like the school committee did not address that and they will leave that to us as a council. So I think that's a piece of work that we need to continue on. Having said all that, I realize that we need to move forward because if this is gonna get on the November referendum, we need to have that printed by, what, September, damn? Certainly by the first, first, the first week in September. That's a referendum.
Forty-five days before then.
Forty-five days before, so that would be no later than the middle of September. So we've really gotta act on this within the next couple of months.
In theory, we could pass it at our, at our September meeting.
That's right.
That's the latest we could do.
That's right.
That would be the second meeting.
So, you know, I realize people have really done a lot of work, but I think considering that we're looking at a ten-million-dollar bond, we've just gotta make sure that we financially understand that. Just to complicate the issue even more, we, we have got the issues going on in Augusta and, uh, and our good representative Zaya, and I wanna thank her for doing what she could to get additional school funding. And we aren't gonna know what that impact is until probably around the middle of July. The, the Department of Education website says that they will not know what the new distributions will be for sure until no later than July twenty-first. So I think that we need to plug those in. Not that that's gonna solve everything around a ten million, but as you remember what we did in this budget, we pulled another three hundred and forty-six thousand out of fund balance and projected we're gonna have to raise the mill rate approximately a third just to cover the education. So I think all of that has to be into this, both short-term equation and long-term. So, um, I'm probably inclined to support this motion tonight because we need to move forward. But I'm also very uncomfortable with, with a lot of the unknowns and I'm probably gonna ask some more questions before we're through, before I can either support it at the next reading. Uh, one final thought, and we really only have one, I think, one, two, two from the school committee here. We got a lot of challenges, but we also have a lot of opportunity. One thing that we, I like for the school committee to consider is if they'd be willing to form a budget committee made up of members of the council, so inclined, some of the school committee members and maybe some of the folks within the community to really get into both not just next year's budget, but where we're gonna be five years from now. Because, you know, we tend to go year to year and this year was particularly challenging. And, but I think that we've gotta take a longer view and start thinking strategically as to what we need to do. I certainly didn't prompt the good mayor of Waterville to be here tonight, but, uh, I think that topic is something we really don't understand because our enrollment's going down, spending goes up every year, and there's an old joke about, you know, if I may, Mr. Chairman, old joke. There were these two guys flying in a twin-engine plane. One guy looked out the window and said, gee, I think we just lost this, this engine. So he turned, turned to, to the other guy and says, Paul, how far would that engine take us? He said, all the way to, to the scene of the crash. And I'm not being, I'm, I'm trying not to be too flippant, but I am seriously concerned that if we keep going in the direction we're going, we are gonna run out of money in fewest of ways. And we've gotta start thinking of that a little more strategically. So I would, uh, not that we need an answer tonight, but I would like to hear the school committee's response if we could form a joint budget workshop committee that can, before we get to the budget, start working on both the short-term and a little longer term. And I appreciate your indulgence on the poor joke, us a ramble. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First, first of all, I would like to thank the school committee and the building committee and the counselors that attended all the meetings and the subcommittees and everybody, the chairman of the subcommittees. It was a nice, it was a very comprehensive effort. The communication with all the things, with Facebook now, with the town, on the town report. All that information is available off the town website and on the school website. I encourage all the citizens of the town of Winslow to go to those websites, look at the drawings, look at the justifications. Because right now is that although we're in this situation of a ten-point-three-point, three, ten-point-three-million-dollar bond, the justification for that is pretty well spelled out and was communicated and was justified. We have questions, obviously, when you spend that amount of money, but there are questions that are answerable questions. And I think the communication and the, uh, the teamwork of all the subcommittees involved made it to this point that we can sell this and that that's a very positive thing for the town of Winslow. I think we would also like to hear, of course, we were unaware that, uh, the mayor of Waterville was gonna be here, uh, tonight. And I'm not saying it's kind of a bombshell, but it is kind of, uh, interesting that, uh, now we're talking about, you know, a consolidation or a possible consolidation, not just of services, but of also somewhat of the school system. And I, I would definitely like to hear from the residents of the town of Winslow because in the end, you govern what really we do and your input is vital, uh, to the future. in the end, you govern what we do and your input is vital to the future of the schools and the public work and the services that we offer you. So we definitely would like to hear what your thoughts are on that matter going forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yes, one of the things is I get a lot of questions from a lot of my people, not necessarily my district, but some of the other districts, about this. They're all, most of them are concerned about what the mill rate of high kids gonna be. This is the first time tonight that I heard somebody say it could be three-quarters of the mill on this. Now I gotta turn around and tell the same people, well, I, we weren't real accurate, gonna be another quarter mill high, might be another quarter mill higher. And they basically, most of them are saying that they're gonna not support this.
They'll vote it down then.
Yeah, I think that's the beauty of putting this to a referendum vote is the people that will be paying the bill are gonna be the ones to pass it or fail it, and I think that's an important concept.
At least we're getting it out there. Voting, no, tonight, we don't get it out there.
Right, right.
At least we're getting it out there for people to vote on. I think that's the most important thing. They'll tell us whether they want it or not.
And they will also have a chance next month at a public hearing to come and express their opinion too, and that would be important too, if they wanna do that. Go ahead.
I was going one question through the chair. Ray, you're a part of this committee, correct?
Yes.
How did it jump from 8.3 to 10.3 in one month?
I don't have the specifics right here. I know we went through why that happened. A lot of it, part of it was that we did at the last minute finance 600,000 dollars for the demolition of the Junior High School.
I understand that one.
So that one was in there. We went from, and this is, and, you know, I mean, it's been a while since we met. We did some tweaking to the auditorium, to the auditorium, that increased some of the cost from what it was previously. And the other, you know, without my notes right in front of me, then I just can't answer that question, but I think we'll have those answers by the time, you know, in a very short time and communicate to the council. Ken's and yours, and I think you need to, you know what I mean?
That's May of 2016, Ben? So that would've been here?
Okay, okay. You're right. I didn't look at the date, it's in May 6th, May 2nd and June 2nd. I do know that we added the 650,000 to start the Junior High one. And it was a toss-up on the forming, that's another thing, between the number of seats and stuff like that. So I went to a couple of the meetings myself, but I, every time I look at it, it's a little bit higher and I'm just kinda curious what happened at the end of it, because this is the latest thing on the board, right? Thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody all set? More ready to go? All set, okay. We'll have a roll call vote?
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ben Pritchard?
No.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
No.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we will go to Resolution 24, 2017. Provided for approval of the attached 2016-2017 Certificate of Sewer Commitment of Sewer User Rates. Be resolved by town council of town of Winslow as follows. Whereas a town of Winslow is required to file a sewer commitment, and whereas the commitment total is 62,621.77, now therefore be resolved, town council, the town council approves of the attached 2016-2017 Certificate of Sewer Commitment of User Rates, total of 62,621.77.
So moved.
Then moved. Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What exactly is this, Mr. Chairman? I read through every page.
I was hoping you wouldn't ask.
I read through every page of that, saw different names in there more than once. I'm just kinda curious.
We do this every year, or at least have been for the last few years. It's so that authorizes us to collect these fees, they have to be committed by the town council in order for us to--
Send a bill of trust and--
Couldn't you?
Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead with the roll call vote then, right? Oh, is that a resolution? This is a resolution, or requires a hand vote. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Did I miss another one?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Why did I go through that one?
There's an extra one given tonight.
Yes, okay, that was my revised amendment. Okay, we have one more resolution. Resolution number 23, 2017. A resolution providing for upon execution of the attached release, attached release by Ronald Leclair, the town manager is authorized to pay Ronald Leclair 15,000 dollars in settlement of his claims. Be resolved by town council of town of Winslow as follows. Whereas a town of Winslow hereby settles all claims of any nature with Ronald Leclair for the sum of 15,000 dollars as described in the attached release, now therefore be resolved by town council of the town of Winslow that upon execution of the attached release by Ronald Leclair, the town manager is authorized to pay Ronald Leclair 15,000 dollars in settlement of his claims. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Resolution number 23, 2017 is on the table. We're all set? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when you came in, there was a resolution on your table for the police department for confiscated funds and the chief was here for--
Okay, well, we'll stop and go right to it. Resolution number 25, 2017. A resolution providing for the use of confiscated funds acquired by the Winslow Police Department be resolved by town council of town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the town of Winslow through its police department has received funds by forfeiture in various crimes that have been solved, and whereas these funds need approval of town council before any expenditure can be made, and whereas the forfeited amount now totals 2,147.72, and the police department is in need of purchasing GPS units for their cruises and are in need of 755 dollars. Now therefore be resolved by town council of town of Winslow that the town manager is hereby authorized to use 755 dollars of the confiscated drug funds for purchase and installation of GPS units for the police cruisers. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Then moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? We're all set? Please stop and turn to the right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Under discussion, we have an item called adopted state budget. Would we have somebody in the room that might be able to speak for that? And does anybody have any specific questions?
So my name is Catherine Natto. I'm the representative for Winslow and Benton. And I can tell you what the budget does. Like, the budget increases investments in Maine students, schools, and teachers. It also helps direct care work investment, to lift children out of poverty, invest in higher education, which provides funding for the University of Maine system, keeping tuition affordable and higher education accessible. It supports job training, it funds the Maine Community College system. Part of this also has to do with Maine Maritime Academy. Protects vital services, protects investment in head start, improves disability services, funds rural hospitals, and blocks devastating cuts to behavioral health care. That is what our budget does. That is what this budget will do. So, whatever questions you have.
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, I fully appreciate the last couple of weeks, they're a little chaotic and, you know, I tried to follow up on paper, but I can't even figure out from one day to the next. It's my understanding that we, with this budget, that we bring homestead exemption to 20,000?
Correct.
Okay, from 15 to 20.
Correct.
Is the state gonna fund at 62.5% or are they gonna cut back to 50%? Funded, meaning reimbursed.
We don't have, we, we're not really done, we're done the budget, but we still have the line items to go through yet. So I can't give you precise numbers because we have line items to go through. I'll be in appropriations on Wednesday.
Okay.
And that, that will give us a better clue on what we'll be able to fund and at what. But right now, we're waiting to get, a lot of what's on that table, it has to go away.
And, you know, the reason that's important is because originally, if you go back to the last budget, it was gonna increase to, you know, to 20,000. The state was gonna fund that's reimbursed, I should say, at 62.5% versus 50%. I heard some talk of going back to 50 and I never could find the final. So if, so if you could find that out--
Yeah, I can find the final, sure.
You know, if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, got the education funding, I think that's very positive. I think that's, you know, very, very much needed. And that 162 increase is over two years, correct?
Correct.
And is that above what the governor proposed or is that--
Again, we don't have the specific numbers, but it is above, it's, in one figure, it's 309 above what he wanted to given his initial budget.
Okay.
So it's 309,000 more, and I can't give you those numbers. I will have them set in stone, but right now, it's like, you know, it's like everyone knows, it's ever-changing until we actually get rid of the line items.
Okay.
And so, but I do know the numbers that I sent the chair. Those numbers are estimates and they will be fine-tuned in a couple of weeks when we're through this next part. So I think it will be a big, a better amount is what I'm going for, let's put it that way.
You know, the reason that is important is because from FY '18, I mean, from FY '17 to FY '18, the governor's proposed budget, going back to January, cut education funding by 423,000 dollars to Winslow. And that was the big issue, you know, how, how do we fill that gap? So what we decided to do is to pull 346 out of fund balance and then pick up another 190,000 out of taxes. So I'm hoping that once we get the numbers, we can back that in and we build the budget around the fact the first dollar of additional goes against fund balance, and then if there's anything else, we might be able to mitigate. So that's why, you know--
It's kind of important what that level's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
Because we would love to be able to tell the taxpayers that they won't be getting that massive increase that we discussed. It'd be really nice to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kathy? She's here. Go ahead, Ray.
And I know in your report, Representative Natto, that you mentioned revenue sharing. One of your disappointments was that the legislature wasn't able to increase revenue sharing. And to me, that's just, just a critical error that, and not for anybody's fault, but that when the economy is growing and we're getting added revenues with the state, that we can't up that revenue sharing. Because if we can't do it now, then when will we ever do it? When will we ever do property tax relief? If we can't do it now, I don't see, do we get it in the future? The schools are great, we did that and stuff, but we, I don't know, you really tried really hard to get that done.
No, I do. I fight every day for that.
Yeah.
Still on the table, it looks like what we're planning to do next time is to fund it to three. That is our goal. We couldn't do it this time or we wouldn't be able to get the two-thirds. That, that was a big stickler.
One quick question, when you say go to three, do you mean for the second year of this budget or do you--
No.
Two years from now?
Right.
Talking about three.
Yeah. Unless we can do something through the off year, which is not, it's even, it's even harder to do. So we're, we're looking at the next.
It was in the budget for this year to go to three, I believe, and it was taken out in the last, last--
No.
No, it wasn't in?
No, I didn't know. No, it was flat funded again for two all along. We tried to get it to three.
To me, in my own personal opinion, that's more important than the, than the sharing, than the school budget for two reasons. Number one, it's been in existence since, what, early 70s, mid 70s, and we've always gotten the 5%.
Right.
We've never gotten 55%, not once have we gotten 55%. So that's always been a nebulous number for us. But the 5% of state revenue, we know what that is, and we count on that to pave our roads and to keep our infrastructure up, and you've seen what we've had to do the last three or four years because of that, and it's a real big impact on our budget.
Well, you're preaching to the choir.
I understand that.
Because--
Go ahead, Ken.
You know, good, Mr. Chairman, right now, and, you know, that's why I think it was good that it's being discussed. I think LD 133 is, is the vehicle that takes it to three to four to five.
Senator Bellows, and I'm corresponded on there.
And the last I knew, that was still in committee. So do you think that's gonna be held over?
It's gonna be held over.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll hold it over, but it's, you know, next year's a short year and--
But there is a possibility they could discuss that, right? If, if there's an increase in revenues or something at the state level, sometimes they don't, they come back to spend that money.
Because according to what's--
There's always a possibility.
Because according to what's in the, what's in the statute, it's supposed to go back to 5% in 2020. So the concern right along has been this idea of permanently getting it fixed at two or zero. So I think it's encouraging that at least it's at two, it hasn't been firmly fixed at two, and if they just follow state law, it will go back to 5% in 2020.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Just wanna say thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This isn't an easy time, I know, for people to be reaching across the aisle, there's a lot of vitriol down there, and it's nice to see that you guys were able to work something out. Appreciate it. Any further discussions?
Do what you--
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Yeah, we are done.